It's Thursday, November 6th, 2014. May I please have the attendance Dr. Entwistle?
Mrs. Bealy.
Here.
Mr. Chiazo.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Mrs. Massengill.
Here.
Mrs. Murphy.
Here.
Mrs. Perry.
Here.
Mrs. Shea.
Here.
Ms. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Hardle.
Here.
Would you please join me for the press, please? And do we have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Um, I believe the only adjustment was additional appointments. Nine point four went worth co-curricular appointments, but I believe that you have received that prior to this evening.
Yes, we did.
So that should actually be on the...
It's just not listed on the agenda.
It's not, okay.
No. All right, so that would be nine point four on the agenda for anyone who's following a while. It would be co-curricular for Wentworth. So then I'd look for the superintendent's report.
Um, okay. Well, I guess this will be fairly brief. Teaching and learning through this first quarter of 2014, 2015 has been going very, very well, and that's what we want here. I thought this might be a nice opportunity to introduce you briefly to a new seminar series. There's like, there's some extras here if you want one and you want to share it with the other folks there. There's a new seminar series that is being offered across the district this year. We are, we're basically, it's a custom-designed seminar that I work with Monique and with Kathy Terrell from the middle school and Kelly Mullen-Martin, and there's probably a couple of other folks as well who are involved. And we've customized a six, one-hour sessions seminar that happens throughout the school year, and it happens in every single building. We use, utilize staff time, faculty time, faculty meeting time. Like I said, it is just six, one-hour sessions, and it really allows our teachers and staff to get a more in-depth study, a more in-depth look, and particularly a better understanding around the application of what they find in the, in Marzano's Art and Science of Teaching. And Art and Science, as you all know, and Marzano also is the creator of the new professional evaluation and professional growth system that we are about to start piloting a little bit later in the winter, and the system that is being adopted for all of Scarborough. You know, I do think it's important, it is indeed a mandate from the state that there be new professional evaluation and, or performance evaluation and professional growth plans. I have said it earlier, but I do think it's worth repeating, Scarborough is there at that point anyway, so even if the state were not requiring us to do this, this is important work to improve the quality of the instruction that's happening here. We have excellent staff who are very dedicated, but we all can improve, we all need to learn, and that performance evaluation, professional growth system is excellent and really does focus on that growth piece which really drives improved quality instruction and basically results in higher performances from students. I think what you see in this little, little design, I guess I've given them all away now, so Kelly, what you see in this introduction is really that, in the same way that we have all of the learning focus, very student-centered, we also have a professional learning focus that is very staff-focused, and all of our teachers, all of our professionals, and even our ed techs, our other, which are our other instructional support staff, are all targeting some very specific professional learning goals. Those professional learning goals are guiding them and connecting them in their professional learning teams. So we've evolved the professional learning teams to really be collegial based on similar targeted professional growth goals, okay? So that not only are we working in an area of common interest around improved student outcomes, but we've started from a basis of connecting around a common professional learning goal that we have, maybe the four of us have, and then from there we're examining student needs and a commonality that will allow us to grow and use our PLT time as exploratory and experimental and, and basically classroom laboratory time that we bring back, compare our notes as colleagues with a real focus on improving our instruction and improving our overall performance as instructional professionals. So you see that this little triangle here has the professional learning goals at the center, the PLTs, as I said, have served as a foundation for the formulation of PLTs for 2014, 15, and it is very much connected to the professional evaluation and professional growth system, as I said, which is Marzano's. So the, the, all of that work is connected, and then the third piece that supports the professional learning are those other resources, either instructional coaches which take a very active role in terms of modeling, providing resources, providing quality assurance in terms of the curriculum, but as well, this seminar series fits the bill in addition to that. So the seminar series is really allowing more additional time for staff to really dig in, really understand the Marzano learning map, the, the design questions that Marzano has based this entire performance evaluation system on, and really allows teachers to investigate, engage, and try out elements which are essentially very effective research-based strategies that are, that are proven to have an improved, improved outcome in terms of student learning. So, so it's, these pieces are, you know, one, one triangle is sort of sitting out there. This, this is now creating a system of, again, a staff-focused learning system that allows them to use their professional, their PLT time to, to engage in this new performance evaluation and professional growth system, and as well to access the resources that we have been building, sort of building the bicycle as we go to, to, to achieve the learning goals that teachers have. It's a, it's a, it's simple looking at it, it's fairly sophisticated, and it takes a while until those pieces really come together. We have just provided the second session in the six-session series, and that has been rolled out, and, and again, we are doing a custom design, we're using the Marzano material, but it, but it's, it's actually a great learning process for the leadership council who then is taking this back to their, their respective faculty groups and, and rolling out this, this experience. So it's, we're getting some pretty positive feedback. That's my...
Thank you. I understood that completely, quite frankly, but I've been a teacher. For people who have not been in education, would you give an example, please, of just one small goal that is being addressed at any level, doesn't matter?
Well, a popular one, a design question that's very popular is Design Question Three, and it's really a focus on helping students interact with new knowledge. How can I, as a teacher, use strategies in the classroom when I'm introducing new material to make, to create a greater likelihood that all of the students that are receiving this new material are going to interact with it in a way that's going to be meaningful for them? And that's not, well, you think, well, you just do it. Well, it's not quite that, that, that simple, particularly since we have, in any class, you would have perhaps twenty learners, and we've got several different learning styles, and we've got individualized backgrounds that every single one of those learners have. And we've got anxiety about math, or maybe no anxiety about math. So, so there's, so it's, it's really, again, this is the science of teaching, the art is how I, how I make it exciting and engaging. The science is using strategies that have been proven by research that are most effective for the greatest number of students to interact with that new knowledge. Thank you for giving me the opportunity for the, the example. And Donna, you dug into this a bit.
Well, our, who will be running the six, one-hour thesis administration?
The building leaders.
Building leaders, okay.
But they're very interactive. They're very interactive in terms of, of teachers and ed techs, really, and professionals all working together. And oftentimes they're reforming into their PLTs as well.
So the, are the administrators then working together in order to develop those lessons and make some commonality at each school, or...
Yep, it's a rollout. We have a, we have a, we have a core team that's sort of custom-designing. We then take that to the leadership council, they basically go through that lesson, and then they take the lesson and they bring the lesson to their school. So it's a, it's a scaffolded approach.
Yeah, and, and it's kind of analogous to our coaches because really, basically, you know, we're using our own people, and that's a savings in money.
Oh, yeah.
It's huge savings because we're not sending people out to big conferences that, you know, can be anywhere from ninety to a hundred and fifty dollars a person.
Or, or way more.
Yeah, instead we're using, you know, our leadership in order to train, train our teachers, so.
Well, like I said, it's a learning process for all of us. You, you know, you never know anything as well as if you have to teach it. So we're, we're all in that position.
Do you have more?
Nope, that was it.
Okay.
And so we'll be, you know, we'll be sharing more with you about...
Well, thank you for that report.
That concludes...
Appreciate it. All right, so the chair's report. So I'm going to start off by saying that Saturday, October 18th, under bright sunshine, we held the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new Wentworth School. Several hundred community members were in attendance, and after the short ceremony emceed by Principal Kelly Crosby, the ribbon was cut by retired Principal Ann Mary Dexter. After the ribbon was cut, the public was invited to take a student-led tour of the building. I think it was an overwhelming success. The student tour guides, some needed some prodding along, others just went right to it and did a fabulous job, so it was great to see that. So hopefully everybody had an opportunity to see the building. I do know that Community Services did offer a group that went out today, I think it's nine o'clock this morning.
Oh.
With, yeah, it's the senior wow, fifty-five and older, so if you didn't have an opportunity, hopefully you can at some point get in when there's an event going on or something. Also, on that same evening, the Scarborough Education Foundation held its third annual harvest celebration at Bailey's Campground. The evening was great time for everyone, and the entertainment was provided by the TimePilot, so look forward to their fourth annual, and of course, everybody, maybe everybody doesn't know, but Scarborough Education Foundation gives grants to teachers who write grant proposals for innovative and new things that are outside of the typical school budget. So we've had some really great success with that. Some teachers have gotten three D printers and document cameras and all kinds of other things. So Scarborough Education Foundation, great thing to invest money in. Also, on October 23rd and 24th, members of the board participated in the two-day conference at the Bain School Management Association in Augusta. We attended informative sessions ranging from school policy and law, contract negotiations, and issues regarding charter schools and funding, as well as just general school funding. So our student reps, Kristin and Emma, attended on Thursday for several sessions, including one entitled Student Representatives on School Boards. The ladies actually were doing the presentations, they did an excellent job, and it was great for them to be able to give feedback to school districts that most of them didn't have representatives on the board, and they were interested in finding out what they should do, and the ladies discussed their elections, what they offered to us, which is a great amount of information to us that we wouldn't normally have because we're not in the school every day. So it was wonderful, and we appreciate you coming up, ladies, so thank you. The board also was at the polls this past Tuesday in an effort to build our email list to better able to communicate with members of the public without children in our school system. The setup was a little odd, so it was really rather difficult, I guess, but we all manned the table for a number of hours, and I think we had a, you know, a good number of email signups. It would have been nicer had we had a spot someplace else, but we were discussing that with the clerk and with Guy Gledhill, who runs the election, so hopefully next year they'll have a different setup for us and we can get some more signatures. I'd also like to say that Oak Hill Players is putting on their performance of White Christmas. Tonight is opening night, unfortunately we're all here, so we can't attend opening night. The performances are tonight, tomorrow, which is November 7th, Saturday, November 8th, and those are all at seven PM. Sunday, the 9th, is a matinee at two PM, and then we have next Thursday, which is the 13th, Friday the 14th, Saturday the 15th, and then 16th. And the evening performances on Thursday, Friday, Saturday are again seven PM, and Sunday at two PM, tickets are for sale at the door, so.
And the Patriots have a bye week, so Sunday afternoon would be a great time.
Oh, well, thank you for pointing that out, Jackie, I wasn't thinking that, so anyway, get out and support the Oak Hill Players, a lot of young, you know, talented individuals participate in that, so, and I know that Jane's son is there, and Kate Bolton, our business finance manager's daughter, is involved in that, so I don't think Emma or Kristin are, so, okay.
No, you don't say...
Please bring cash. So, um, so yes, please plan on going to see that, the Oak Hill Players always puts on excellent performances, so.
And can you say one more thing, please bring cash or checks, you cannot take credit cards.
Oh, all right, cash or check only at the box office, no credit cards accepted, so... Do you know how much it is to get in? Is it five dollars or seven?
Ten...
Oh, it's twelve?
Twelve.
Oh, all right, the price has gone up, sorry.
Well, for adults, it's eight. For students, it's...
Okay. So, bring a little extra cash, so, all right, and that concludes my report this evening.
Christine, may I add something, even though I'm not the chair? Last Saturday, Kiwanians and other people, along with, I think there were twelve key club members from Scarborough, packed macaroni and cheese. It's a program that has gone mostly nationwide now, for, we took ten boxes, I think, to the backpack program here, and fourteen boxes to the Scarborough pantry, food pantry. But I wanted you to know that, that I think it was twelve of our key clubbers and their advisor, plus Kiwanians from Scarborough, Sanford, Bitifat Saco, Standish, along with other key clubbers, were there, interacting and having a good time and packing these meals, so.
Great, all right.
Just a shout-out that the pan, Food Pantry has told us that there will be a hundred and seventy-five families needing Thanksgiving dinners, and I don't remember how many at, at the Project Grace, do you recall?
It's, it's different every year, in the last few years it's been between eighty and ninety families, so.
So there's a need in Scarborough if you wish to contribute to the Food Pantry or Project Grace or both.
Thank you. And that would conclude my report this evening, so I will look down to the ladies there for the Students' Representatives' report, please.
So I have for, at the middle school, the student and parent-teacher conferences will begin on November 12th, and all the sixth graders wrote letters to veterans to thank them for their service, and they'll be shared on HonorFlights, and you can feel free to go to HonorFlight.org if you'd like to see more information about that organization and what they do for all of our veterans. The middle school, we will be participating in the Stuff a Bus fundraiser put on by Rewind 100.9, and all the donations of non-perishable food items will go to the Preble Street Resource Center, and they'll be collecting food through November 21st. And both the middle and high school participated in a mock election. The middle school especially put time into teaching their students about the election process, and surprisingly, both the middle school and high school results were very, very similar, although they didn't always agree with what the actual results were. The high school had a very, very successful fall sports season so far. Last Saturday alone, we celebrated three state championship wins in field hockey, boys' cross-country, and girls' cross-country, which makes the count four so far this year, including golf from earlier this season, and both boys-in-curls soccer finished their seasons last night, ending as the Western Maine Class A runners-up. As already mentioned, the Oak Hill Players have their annual show, and I've seen it in the past, it's really good, so I'd really suggest that everybody go out and support them. And my last is our plug for the senior class Red Storm Bolt Road Race. It's a five K run-walk, and everybody is invited to go to active.com and search for the Red Storm Bolts to come support the senior class in Project Grace.
What's the date?
November 15th, it's next Saturday.
Okay, and it's active as in A-C-T-I-V-E?
Active.com. Dot com, and if you search for the Red Storm Bolt, it should be the first thing that comes up.
All right, in the three primary schools, the parent-teacher conferences have begun this week, and they'll continue through next week. Also, like the middle school, the K through two schools are participating in the Stuff a Bus food drive to benefit the Preble Street Food Pantry. Donations of non-perishable food items can be made at any K through two school. Also, the primary PTA is holding book fairs in all three buildings this week, so please support early literacy and primary PTA by shopping for books. Wentworth will be starting the thirty book, the Thirty Book Reading Challenge with students this November. They have been asked to be a part of the Bikes for Books program that is sponsored by the Governor William King Lodge Number 219. An assembly was held to kick off the Thirty Book Reading Challenge on October 31st, when reading was promoted by teachers through song, dance, and inspirational videos. The school is poised to read two thousand books collectively, oh, excuse me, twenty thousand books collectively. Also, on October 31st was the annual Special Olympics of Southern Maine Bowling Tournament. Seven Wentworth students among thirty from the district were present. Upon their return from the event, Mrs. Crosby organized a very special welcome in which students from one of the learning communities lined up and created a cheering entrance for the athletes. After four years in the making, Hundreds celebrate the opening of the new Wentworth School on October 18th at the ribbon-cutting ceremony, as already mentioned, and the open house after the following. During the open house, students and staff gave tours of the new school, pointing out key areas and the school's interactive technology outfitting the classrooms.
I'd also like to add that the WGME Spirit Challenge winner will be announced from six to seven AM on Friday on Channel 13. Tune in and see how Scarborough did. And that concludes the Students' Representatives' report tonight.
Thank you very much, ladies. Now we have eight point oh, we have recognitions this evening?
Just a couple, I think Emma, and Emma and I received some of the same, same notes, and she did a great job presenting. Just a congratulations to the 2014, 2015 Honor Festival musicians, this is at the middle school. Honor band is Nail Clavert on trombone, George Mitchell, not that George Mitchell, on trumpet, and Alyssa Ostrowski on percussion. In terms of honor chorus, Sam Lufkin and Madeline Shields, so we want to congratulate all of them. And again, I wanted to recognize Emma and Kristin for the fabulous job. It was Mrs. Massengill, myself, so it was the superintendent, board chair, and student reps presenting to a pretty good, we had a pretty good group, and people had a lot of questions. It can be a little bit intimidating, the MSMA is primarily a gathering of superintendents and school board members, and, and other folks who are in, in that periphery of servicing those, those groups. And multi-levels of seminars, this one was, as Mrs. Massengill said, all about having the value that student reps bring to the service of the board, and, and these two students did an extraordinary job of representing themselves, they're very articulate, representing their school, and certainly representing the community. We were very proud of them, and I think that they felt good about their presentation, felt that that trip up to Augusta was worth it. So thanks.
And might I also add, congratulations to Kristin down at the end for scoring that winning goal at the end of the field hockey game to win the championship, so.
With two seconds to go.
Yes, with two seconds left, right, congratulations, Kristin. Nice job. Now that we've embarrassed you ladies enough, so we'll move on from there then. We have nine point oh, we have new business, we have the minutes of October 16th, 2014.
Whose approval is printed?
Any questions, corrections, omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of approval as presented, the minutes of October 16th, 2014, seven plus two, thank you. Next, we have nine point two, we have high school co-curricular appointments.
And those are the stipend contracts for 2014, 15 as presented.
Okay, June, oh, sorry. The will of the board this evening.
Moved to approve?
Move approval, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, are these, is this it for the high school, do you know? This is not sure.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions, comments? Yes, questions?
I, I did email Dr. Entwistle earlier, and I'll, I'll ask again for the clarification on the homework club advisor.
We're only on nine point two.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I thought we were doing it all together as printed.
No, I, I said nine point two because we've got something in between nine point two and nine point four, sorry.
And I'll retract the question until the appropriate time.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No, no worries.
I should have made myself a little more clear. All right, so, any questions about nine point two? No? All in favor of approval of nine point two to high school co-curricular appointments as presented? Seven, thank you. All right, now we have nine point three, which is an update on the 2016 Europe trip. I'll turn it over to Dr. Entwistle for an introduction.
And I'll ask you to come on up and give us an update. Yes, and I'll ask you to come on up and give us an update.
Sending out a, yeah, can I? Hi, I'm Steve Tronsolito from the Social Studies Department at Scarborough High School, and wanted to share with you tonight, intent to take students abroad for June of twenty-sixteen. So, we're talking twenty months out from where we are today. And as you know, uh, as members of the school board, we've had successful trips, um, in prior years with Education First Tours based out of Boston. We currently have a trip in place for June of twenty-fifteen to Greece, Athens, and the islands. And currently, uh, the status on that trip, which is not in the, we have twenty-six students enrolled there, and we may have even more students enrolling before, before springtime. Last June, we had a very successful trip. We took twenty-eight students to, uh, London, Paris, Madrid, and Barcelona, and, uh, the majority of them were seniors who have now since gone on to college. But we still have a handful of, um, now seniors this year, uh, who are still in the high school who, um, participated in that trip. And that was, this is an amazing experience. So, we're now moving ahead to twenty-sixteen, and, um, the reason we plan ahead is the price point for student travel just makes it so much more affordable. And since ninety-nine percent of the students who participate, um, in tours with EF tend to finance it monthly, so prior, just prior information for them, they can plan ahead, they basically register, and then they, um, make monthly payments. So, giving them twenty months, uh, eighteen to twenty months advance notice just helps everyone to, to kind of plan ahead financially. So, we're moving ahead to twenty-sixteen, and you can see the itinerary that's there before you. Um, and it's a thirteen-day tour to Berlin, and I won't bore you the whole itinerary, but it's basically through the Swiss Alps into Austria, Czech Republic, Liechtenstein, and then on to, um, to Switzerland, and then ending up in Paris. And EF, um, who I have, this will be my fourth tour with this company, incredibly, um, well-run, extremely professional. They're the nation's oldest tour company in the country. They've been in business for over fifty-five years, and, um, just my experience with them has been phenomenal. And, um, we're currently hoping to have, um, for the Greece tour, the same tour director I've worked with the last two trips, who is just a really outstanding woman from Rome. And I'm now looking ahead to twenty-sixteen to get her on board to lead this tour again. Uh, and she's actually visited the town of Scarborough. Um, two years ago, she came to visit after, um, meeting my first group of students who , uh, traveled abroad and had such a great rapport with them that she was in New York and took the train up to Scarborough to, um, spend time at my house in Cape Elizabeth, and we all went out to lunch and reconnect with students. So, that's kind of what I think international travel and education is all about, making those kind of international connections with other people. So, um, so not to keep you, but, um, what I'm seeking tonight is just confirmation and, and permission to, to continue this, uh, travel program. I'll be working with Lincoln McIsaac, who, um, I've worked with in the past on these trip planning.
I think that Mr. McIsaac was before us last year because you were engaged elsewhere.
Exactly, right. He, he spoke with you last year, and I believe I met, met with you two years ago regarding the trip that we, uh, just successfully completed to Spain and France and England.
Steve, it's also important just to point out that essentially what, what you're seeking from the board is the, is the authorization to be able to recruit students to this, although it is not a school-sponsored
Correct.
...travel, and, and, and really has nothing to do with expenditure of school resources. I think it's important to know that.
Exactly, yep. Uh, students, um, fully finance their, um, their travel experience. Um, the expectation is that it is instructional, it is educational. Um, students, um, are expected to follow a code of behavior, uh, proper procedure on the tour. Um, and just looking at the, you know, the world situation, obviously, it's sobering at times when you look at the international news. So, I think, uh, in my humble opinion, the students from the past who have participated in these tours from Scarborough have just been outstanding student leaders. Um, and what happens with EF is they will place us with other student groups from across the country, so the kids get to know other kids from across the US as well as host country national people. And the Scarborough students that I have taken abroad have just been exemplary. They're the ones who kind of assume the leadership roles, um, in the tours that we've done. So, um, so students are aware of what their responsibilities are and what they're expected to, uh, how they're expected to behave and, uh, what their role is on the trip.
So, I just have one question.
Certainly.
So, this trip we'll be leaving after school is out for the year.
Correct.
So, you've factored in any kind of weather issues and extensions of school that we typically sometimes fall into?
Exactly, and, and looking at the ongoing sports achievement of the high school, um, we've realized, um, April vacation can be tough just because of so many sports programs. And then in June, even with finals over, our plan is we, we post after commencement, uh, final exams are over in the, in the high school. And then inevitably, uh, there are state championship games in all the spring sports, track, softball, boys and girls across, um, and so forth. So, we try to time, the rough date of departure would be around June twentieth of twenty-sixteen, and the expectation we would be returning around July, uh, third. Depending on, again, we don't have definitive dates, um, but that's the expectation around departure June twentieth.
Okay.
Jackie, yes?
Steve, it says here that there's a three-day tour extension. Does that mean that some students would go for ten days and some would stay on for an extra three? How do we chaperon those, that first group back home?
Good question. Uh, we actually, all of the students will be going on the tour. We decided, um, to, we kind of took a pulse, took the temperature of students who are already interested in doing foreign travel this year for twenty-sixteen, and we decided to just simply have a thirteen-day tour. So, that Paris piece is actually mandatory, it's included in the tour.
Last, last year it was like that too with the Barcelona piece that got added on?
It, it was, and we've learned from that experience where we initially had a ten-day trip, and then students were saying, let's go on and see Barcelona. Um, so we added that, which went very successfully, but inevitably, uh, it made it a little more complicated because, um, some people weren't sure. So, this trip, we decided, um, let's simply just plan on thirteen days. And I think Paris particularly is a very big draw, especially for French students who, um, who, um, want to practice language there. And as you probably know, uh, in the French program, Helen Van Ness has also been implementing a, um, April French immersion program through Education First Tours as well, so she's working with them also.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Oh, Chris.
Uh, I'll just add that I actually had, this is my first opportunity in high school to travel abroad with this group, and, uh, it was fantastic, changed my life. So, it's a excellent opportunity for the kids, and, um, I, I like the fact that you give them enough lead time to try and, to try and finance it, so I, I would have no problem supporting this. I think we ought to more, more programs like this. We need to broaden our cultural base in Scarborough a little bit, I think.
Great, thank you. I must say one thing, it's not, if, for, for faculty chaperones like myself, um, it's a great opportunity for myself as well, but, um, when you return, it's, it's actually kind of exhausting. We come back from these trips and, uh, so it's great for the students, they get a lot out, a lot out of it. Um, I get a lot out of it as well, but, uh, I know the last trip that went off very well, very successful, um, but I, yeah, I spent a day just sort of like decompressing from the, uh, fourteen days of, of student travel. But I must say Scarborough, Scarborough kids have been outstanding. I, I've had many chaperones from other schools pull me aside and just say, these kids are great, uh, they've done a phenomenal job. And when you look at the, um, don't take all your time tonight, but when you look at the college placement of the students that participate in these programs, um, my seniors that went last year, I had twenty-three of them out of twenty-eight, I think, were seniors, uh, going off to some outstanding, um, colleges and universities across the US. So, I do think it tends to, uh, pull in students who, um, are already seeking challenges and are already intellectually and academically quite motivated, so, so it's a, it's a great opportunity for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, the will of the board this evening regarding the trip? Move to approve?
Second.
Second.
Questions, comments? No? All in favor of approval of the trip that is not necessarily school-sponsored but does fall into us anyway? Seven. And I see the ladies down at the end, two. Thank you. All right, um, now we have nine point four. This was our addition, um, there of the Wentworth, uh, co-curricular appointments.
Move approval?
Second. Okay. Mr. Chiazo?
Now, now, okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, I guess the same question then, if Dr. Entwistle, if you could take a couple of minutes and just describe again the homework club advisor piece?
Yep. Please? I will. Um, the funds for the homework, homework club, um, basically have been shifted out of co-curricular, you know, that there have been some reductions in co-curricular. This seemed to fit into the regular instruction line. Um, the goal is, uh, of this program is to support students, uh, develop, um, appropriate study skills, the, some of the executive skills that are really necessary to navigate school, uh, some problem solving, some, um, some support and motivation in terms of completing homework. Um, and because these goals are in line with core instructional goals, um, and often meet the needs of what we, um, have as traditionally underserved and, and/or at-risk and/or struggling learners, um, the decision was made at Wentworth to support the club stipends through the operating budget. Um, it's typically served, um, uh, forty-five to, forty to forty-five students, two advisors, uh, several high school volunteers as well, who are, and they are basically earning, uh, community service hours while they're supporting their younger peers. Um, I, um, Mr. Chiazo and I had a conversation earlier, and I said in some ways, um, it is, it is homework, but it is, it's, and that's a nice name for this club, um, but it is so much more in the same way that we have Jump Start, which is really so much more than, than fun and play. It, it is really, um, above and beyond, uh, what students are able to access. And essentially, it does supplement what might not be, um, provided in terms of those kinds of supports, uh, once they leave the school.
Okay, question? Who had a, oh.
I just wanted to make a comment that, uh, for homework club, I have known, um, a few different families whose kids have done it, and it's been transformative for the kids and the families, their whole family dynamic, because they have trouble managing time and struggling with, um, figure out how to do the homework, and the whole family gets involved in it, and it's an uproar at night. So, homework clubs, it's all done. So, when kids come home, it's just like relaxing, nice family time, because they've worked out the issues at school with teachers who can help them, because parents don't always know how to help kids do their homework, and it's a different dynamic between a parent and a kid trying to figure some of the stuff out than it is with a teacher and a student. So, I think it's, uh, it's fantastic, and I'm glad it switched to, um, instructional because it is.
Well, and there's, and there's a, there's a large number of kids that, that, um, can access this, and, and, and it's important for them to, to access it. Like I said, um, and you said as well, um, it, it can make a huge difference. We're very fortunate, um, this year with the folks that are engaged, um, and involved in, in this, um, undertaking, to have some very, very strong, um, and capable and, and experienced, um, uh, instructional, uh, folks who, who, um, who, who can be very successful in, in this role of, of supporting these kids, so.
Other, did somebody else have a question down this side? No? Okay, Chris?
Uh, yeah, I certainly don't question the need or the appropriateness of it. I guess my concern is more of why it's a stipend as opposed to part of the, why, why does it need to be an extra stipend, uh, and not part of the regular curriculum or part of the regular instructional process? If it's, uh, it seems, it seems to me to be very academically focused, which is wonderful. The need is there, that's clear. Um, I'm more questioning the need for the stipend portion of it.
And, and it is really, it is, it is supplemental and goes beyond what we can, um, typically offer and what falls within the purview of the responsibilities of the teacher. Really, it extends, it extends beyond that, so it is, it is an extension of their responsibility, um, and that's the reason why it's stipend. The, the other reason, Chris, I think that while we try to do as much of that within the school day, you, um, also have a sense with your own kids that the school days are very full, and we try to fit in as much of that as possible. There are students, however, that, that continue to not have those needs met, and we recognize that with those supplemental supports, they can pick up some skills that will allow them to be much more successful.
And, and just to piggyback on that, um, because I, I had similar thoughts to you, and, um, I was just curious, is it, is it two, three, four times a week? How, how many nights does it mean? Do we have a sense of that?
I, I, I believe it happens, um, four days after school.
Okay, so it's all year, four days after school?
Correct. Well, I think it, it probably doesn't get started until kids get settled into school. Um, but it would be, but it is throughout the whole school year.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. No one else? No? All right, seeing no one else, other questions? All in favor of approval of the co-curricular appointments as presented for Wentworth? We have six. All opposed? One. Okay, so move then. Um, committee reports, ten point oh, so we will start down at Jackie.
Uh, we have, uh, we, we will be meeting soon with the administrators' group, uh, for contract negotiations, and I anticipate that we will be meeting with the association with regards to custodial contract, uh, probably around the first of the year.
Okay. Jane, long-range planning.
Um, we, our committee has, uh, had a meeting early October, and, uh, we basically look at a, uh, a lot of information and identify what's our next, uh, direction to go, what's our, you know, most, um, um, what our dire needs is, we've identified that in the middle school that's overcrowding, so that's, uh, the problem we need to address. Uh, we are exploring many several options and researches, so, but that's what our next big project, we, that's what we're going to focus on.
Okay. John, uh, teacher evaluation and communication?
So, um, the, the teacher evaluation committee met this afternoon, and, um, basically, they did some talking around, uh, this pilot that they're about to begin in every school. Um, and there'll be six people, six teachers who have stepped forward to volunteer, kind of to practice the whole new program that is underway for evaluation and, and professional development. And, and that's at every grade, uh, at all phases, K-12. So, um, that's underway. Our leadership team is being trained in, in the use of Marzano model, and they'll also be working with other school districts in the state who are using Marzano, so that they're, they're teaching each other from other school systems of how to do this, and learning from places that have already started the model and, you know. Um, there's another layer, there's a steering committee that's just started to develop, and that's going to meet occasionally over the course of the whole year, that's kind of going to be a overseer of the whole system. And, um, there is going to be on December third, an important conference, uh, USM, that's going to be able to talk to educators in the state about the component that is the testing and how, what percentage of that testing should be used in an evaluation of a teacher, the testing results of the students in her class. So, what, what's realistic, what would work, what, what makes sense? Um, and so, all that will be talked about on, at that conference date. Um, one of the things I thought about, um, this afternoon at that meeting was, you know, these people have stepped forward to do this work basically for free. It, it's an enormous amount of work. It's done after-school hours and vacations, um, and so I, I kind of have in the back of my mind about, how do we recognize people when we don't give them money for their hours of time? And, and so, I was kind of wondering about whether or not, that might be something that we might want some of these people to come forward at some point by the end of this year to the board in either a business setting or whatever meeting, so that we can just, you know, hear from them a little bit, see how it's going, and, and recognize them. Because, you know, often teachers like, uh, they, they'll get a little note in their box from, from the principal, and that is like the biggest thing in the world.
[laughing]
And so, it just dawned on me being there because I've watched this group work now for over a year, and, um, and the same thing goes for Mrs. Seismel because of the enormous amount of leadership she is providing to this committee. It's just exceptional work. And we're ahead of the game. I've looked at the papers that have come down from the state in terms of what they're asking school systems to do. Some systems are way behind in this. Some systems are way behind in this, they haven't touched it yet. I know because I asked curriculum directors from other places, "What are you doing with this?" I haven't gotten into that yet. And our district is ahead of the game, we are already beginning to become in compliance with the rulings that are now coming down from the state regarding this legislation. So, I think it's great work, and we should do more. As far as communications go, our committee has met, and we are talking about a number of things. One would be, you know, an opportunity to be able to do a column in a local paper that would provide families with, what are some of these topics about education? You know, because for all of us as well, these are new endeavors, these are new initiatives, and, you know, maybe some kind of articles that would be on a regular basis might be a great idea. We went out to meet the public the other night. We talk often about how, what's our next step to engage the community in knowledge and understanding about education and where it's going for the 21st century. So, I'm sorry to be so long.
No, no. That's a lot of work. We want to hear the committee report. Policy committee?
So, the policy committee, we have an updated list from Kelly Johnston of what still needs to be addressed. We've done the required and recommended, now these are just the ones that we have. So, our plan now is to develop a strategy for plowing through them, because before we're kind of like, as things were coming up, we would review the policy, but now we're going to get a wholesale policy and go from there to just bang them out. So, we're going to meet sometime next week, we have to, still firm up the time, but.
All right. The business and leadership, community, help me out.
Business and school partners.
Thank you. Business and school partners.
We haven't met recently, and I think I talked about it at our last meeting, that we've broken into two sort of smaller subcommittees of this larger group. One to sort of look at revitalizing the career fair in a more interactive way, and instead of kids showing up and going booth-to-booth and talking to these people, to actually get them doing different types of jobs and really creating an interactive environment for them to explore opportunities. And then the second group was developed to think of new ideas and new things that we could, ways we could work with the community and businesses to engage the students. One of them has, one idea that came up was an internship program for students, and we looked at that gap sort of timeframe for seniors where finals have ended, graduation hasn't happened yet, and there's not a lot going on, maybe there's a time there that they can take a week and work in the business world or job shadow somebody. So, the other group is sort of coming up with new ideas, so if any of you have thoughts on that, send them my way.
Chris, finance?
Finance met this evening before our meeting. We reviewed first quarter financials. While individual line items may go up and down a little bit, we're pretty much right on par from where we've been the last two or three years. No major surprises. The things we've been talking about right along with utilities, things like that, have spiked up a little bit, but we're offsetting those in some other areas. So, you'll all be receiving the first quarter updates from Kate, hopefully for the next couple of days. Any questions, let me know. Otherwise, we're moving on.
All right. Thank you. And I don't think there's anything else. So, now, we have eleven point oh, we have a motion, or I should say, we don't have a motion yet, but we are planning on adjourning to executive session pursuant to one MRSA, section 405, six D, to discuss the custodial contract. We will not be returning to public session.
So, move.
Do I have a second?
Have a second?
All in favor of adjourning? We have seven, plus two. So, move. We will not be returning to public session.